Good morning, everybody. Today is Tuesday, June 11th. This is the regular meeting for the Board of Supervisors in Lake County. We are going to start off with a moment of silence, and I know that Vice Chair Crandall has a moment of silence checking in with anyone else.
Yes, so I'd like to offer a moment of silence for two incidents and two people that have lost their life this last weekend, one loss of life in a wildfire. So it's imperative that we start preparing and doing what we can with vegetation and being careful with what we do when it comes to just everyday activities to be prepared and be cognizant of what can take place. And so we want to offer our deepest condolences to the family and then another loss of life with an ATV accident. So just wanted to offer our deepest condolences to those families and, yes.
Appreciate that, thank you. I also have one, it's one that should have been done a while ago. On May 15th, Pete Ogo passed away. I knew Pete when he had Pogo's Pizza in Clear Lake. He also had one in the Riviera, Kelseyville, and in Lakeport. Pete was very welcoming, very kind, and always looking to help everybody around him, including his community. And I know that he will be missed by his family, friends, all of those that knew him. And I'm, it was a pleasure to know Pete, and I know everyone else feels the same way, and love to hold them in our thoughts and prayers.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Move on to item number four. Any extra items from board members or staff?
No extra items, sir.
All right. We will go ahead and move on to the approval of the consent agenda. We are going to pull item 5.7 to a further date, so we will not be discussing 5.7. Are there any other items board members wish to pull?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull 5.14.
All right, and that's for discussion?
Yes.
Pull that one for further discussion, and if there's nothing further, let's go ahead and open up for the public. Anyone from the public wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? And I apologize, I have not opened Zoom.
I know.
We're blurry.
Yeah, we're really slow.
And are there any hands up in Zoom?
Um, no.
Sam, can we check in real quick? Are we good on Zoom?
Yes, Zoom is a little bit slow. All the other, all the other things, they spoke into Zoom. Granted, this are, are in time.
Slow, but at least people are able to listen and hear and engage if they needed to?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, then let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent items 5.1 through 5.6, 5.8 through 5.13, and then 5.15 through 5.18.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. Okay, let's move on to our public input, 9:02 a.m. Anyone wish to speak and express themselves to the county board supervisors for anything not on our agenda? Please come and approach the podium. Anyone have a public comment? Please come on up. I'm so sorry, I have your, I have your input form.
Do you want me to wait?
No, please, come on up.
Good morning, chairperson, subadie, supervisors. It's nice to see you all again. My name is Michelle Scully. I live out in the Highland Springs area, and I used to have the opportunity to work for all of you. And I worked in the administrative office where our purpose was to look out for the best interests of the county and the citizens. And I'm hoping in that time that you came to know me as someone who did that, who was a problem solver and not a reactionary person who came to you with imaginary problems. And I hope that that time established me as a credible witness to you, because I want to call on that today. We really desperately need your attention on Highland Springs Park. I have gone through all the channels, Supervisor Green and I have spoken, I've spoken with Water Resources, and the can keeps getting kicked down the road. The gate has, the park has been a free-for-all for probably at least the last six months since the caretaker left. And just this weekend, a bank of mailboxes to all the people who lived there was knocked out by a hit-and-run, and I called and reported it. And when the officer was out looking at it, another truck drove by and did donuts in the parking lot. Someone also, we were told by the disc golf event this weekend, that someone did donuts on their disc golf course. And it's one of the only parks, if I understand this, that allows drinking, and basically it's unsupervised. And I could go on and on about people hunting and non-hunting areas, not motorized dirt bikes on non-motorized trails. But the biggest thing, and Supervisor Crandall, you teed it up for us, the thing that is just flat-out terrifying is fire. And the weeds are unmitigated on the side of the road. I think not too long ago, someone started a dumpster fire. People do warming fires, as if you need that when it's 96 degrees, and it's terrifying. And I know that you guys care about that, we all do. And if I knew that I was looking at something that was potentially devastating to the county and to the citizens, I know that you wouldn't want me just to be quiet about it, which is why I came in this morning. It's really terrifying. And I'm hopeful, I understand that there's a county employee who's interested in being the caretaker, so I wouldn't want to come to you without thoughts and solutions, possible solutions. I understand that possibly some repairs need to be made out there. I'm happy to, like, put on my painting clothes and bring a drill if you need help. So it seems to me like if you do have someone that's the hard part, get the contract, get them in there, get the gates working like they're supposed to, again, people in and out when they're supposed to be out. Years ago, we talked with Sheriff Martin about patrol, and I completely understand that staffing is always a challenge here. But I'm thinking, since, I believe it's the county's range out there, and all the LE agencies utilize it, possibly it would be a nice thing of all the agencies to say, hey, when we're already out there, we'll do a spin around the park and just let people know we're there. But I wouldn't be here if I didn't feel it was terrifying. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else wish to speak? Public comment? Seeing none, and I'm not as a panelist on Zoom, so I can't see if there are any hands up. No hands up. All right. Thank you very much. I do not see our animal control today, so we're going to skip over the pet of the week?
Yes, I was just informed there's no pet this week.
Okay. Adoptions are going great. We'll move on to our 9:05 a.m. Item, Presentation of Proclamation Designating June 2024 as Elder and Adult Dependent Abuse Awareness Month in Lake County. And I know we have quite the team from our social services and AAA. Please come on up.
Good to see you all. Thank you so much.
Okay, proclamation designating June 2024 as Elder and Adult Dependent Abuse Awareness Month in Lake County. Whereas, Lake County seniors and dependent adults are valued members of society and in our collective desire to ensure they live safely and with dignity. And whereas, abuse of elder and dependent adults is a tragedy inflicted on vulnerable adults and an ever-increasing problem in today's society that crosses socioeconomic boundaries. And whereas combating the abuse of elder and dependent adults will help improve the quality of life for all citizens and will allow elder and dependent adults to continue to live as independently as possible and contribute to the life vibrancy of Lake County. And whereas, Lake County is committed to raising awareness about issues facing elder and dependent adults and helping all individuals thrive in communities for as long as possible. And whereas, Lake County promotes building safer communities for all citizens. And whereas, increased awareness of issues of elder and adult abuse increases the likelihood of reporting and successfully prosecuting those who abuse Lake County's vulnerable seniors and dependent adults. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors, along with the Lake County Department of Social Services, does hereby designate June 2024 as Elder and Adult Dependent Awareness Month in Lake County, pass and adopted this 11th day of June 2024.
Thank you. I would like to thank Supervisor Paeska and the board for this proclamation. I'd like to bring out the importance of protecting the most vulnerable. If you see something, please say something. Adults referred have the option to accept our services. 24/7 APS line to report concerns is 888-221-2204, toll-free. If you see any concerns at a long-term care facility, the ombudsman's number is 707-262-4525. I would also like to thank our partners, including senior centers, long-term care facilities, board and care, assisted living, IHSS workers, law enforcement, code enforcement, EMTs, and the hospitals. I'm sure there are many more I have forgotten, forgotten, forgotten. Thank you all for helping us keep our seniors and our disabled adults secure and safe. I'd also like to thank our wonderful staff, small but mighty team. They do an amazing job, and I am grateful for them every day. We have two of our managers here, Amy and, excuse me, Deputy Amy, Deputy Director Amy Shemansky and Lisa Faraco, our program manager, are joined here with me today. If you are not aware of our webpage, check it out. If you want more information about adult services, just Google "Lake County CA Adult Protective Services" or follow us on Facebook, Lake County Social Services, comma, California. There are a few mock pages, make sure you get that one. Thank you.
Any other?
Any other comments? Okay, so Vice Chair Crandall and I sit on the area agents, AAA. And we got to work together to increase services for seniors in Lake and Mendocino County and build in the layers of protection, which are so critical. We have such a high population of seniors compared to other counties around the state, so this is just critically important work. Really thank you all for what you do every day.
Good job.
Thank you.
Just a belated comment before everyone dives off. You know, definitely we need to focus on physical and mental abuse of our seniors, but as I've learned before my mom passed, financial abuse of elders is so common, so prevalent, not just people within family units that may be taking advantage of a situation, but active scammers. I'm a senior now, my cell phone blows up with scams. So if you see it, report it. If you see people that are, you know, you may not be hearing sticks and stones and breaking bones, but if you see somebody setting up camp in a senior's house, if you see people regularly making visits that may not have a business there, financial scams targeting our Lake County seniors is a very serious problem, and I hope everyone takes that to heart.
Thank you for your comments. Going to move along to our 6.4, 9:07 a.m. Item, Presentation of Proclamation Commending John Harper for 32 years of service and dedication to the agricultural community. And I know we don't just have John Harper here, we have also others from the extension, if you can please come up as well.
Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California proclamation, commending John Harper for 32 years of service and dedication to the agricultural community. Whereas, following 32 years of dedicated service in his role to the University of California Cooperative Extension, livestock and natural resources advisor, and the County of Lake director, John Harper officially retired on July 1st, 2023, but continued to serve as interim director of the county. as interim director of UCCCE to ensure that the successful transition of his county director successor. And whereas, John Harper, known as Ed Sheeran of Sheep Shearing, has run California's only five-day sheep shearing school for over 27 years at the UC Hopland Research and Extension Center and various private ranches. This program is internationally acclaimed with a waiting list of over 1,000. And whereas, his other contributions include learning how to write code in 1991 to create the university's first websites for livestock and natural resources, and was an early adopter of social media, which earned him a Silver Award in 2011 from the Association of Natural Resources Extension Professionals. And whereas, his contributions to water quality research have been significant, including the development of the first Rangeland Water Quality Ranch Plan in California and the Rangeland Water Quality Planning Short Course. And he has been recognized with multiple awards for outstanding contributions to Rangeland Management, Water Quality, and Agricultural Education, including the Western Extension Directors Association Award of Excellence and the Society of Excellence and the Society of Range Management's Outstanding Achievement Award stewardship. And John Harper continues to contribute to the community through his emeritus status with UC Agriculture and Natural Resources, and his ongoing mentorship of the University of California Extension County Director and Academic Advisors in Mendocino and Lake Counties, as well as continuing the Sheep Shearing School. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors hereby commends John Harper for his exceptional service and dedication to the agricultural community, his innovative contributions to livestock and natural resources management, and his lasting impact on the lives of many through education and mentorship, passed and adopted this 11th day of June 2024, and signed by the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Bruno Sabatier.
Well, I of course would love to thank the board and all the Chair and the entire County of Lake. I mean, it's been a pleasure to be a servant in the research and science area with regard to livestock. Some of my best friends today are the colleagues that I've met, not only within Extension, but within the county government and within the livestock and natural resources industries that serve this county. So it's really strange to retire from a position that you didn't really have a real job for 32 years because it was so much fun to do. So it's interesting to hear the accolades reviewed back, because I'm Scandinavian, and so it's a little bit embarrassing when you get listed on all these awards and stuff. So I'm a little shy on that, so forgive me for that. But again, as I've said numerous times, Cooperative Extension is the open doors of the University of California. We're here to serve, and our partnerships with the counties, we wouldn't be here without the support that you give us and the continued support. And I'm excited to leave the position now, knowing that there will be a replacement for the Livestock and Natural Resources Advisor, and there will be a 4-H Youth Advisor serving the two counties as well. And especially very happy you all have met my successor as CD, Matthew Barnes. I think you've got a great person in him, I think it was an excellent hire. And so I, and we have a lot of new advisors working very diligently, and tap into them. Make sure you make contact for the folks in your districts. When an issue comes up, you always have to ask us. We'll politely say no if we can't help you. But it's not just our advisors in the field, but it's, again, the whole network of the University of California. So thank you. It's been an honor to be the Livestock and Natural Resources Advisor serving Lake County, and it's also been a tremendous honor to work with the board and the department heads in the county over these years as the county director. So thank you very much, I appreciate the honor.
John, I thank you so much for your service and for the sustainability of the program under your guidance, and you know I reach out to all of the advisors all the time. And I, it's incredible that we have those resources here, and have really changed the trajectory of a lot of the work that we do, particularly around tree mortality and having Mike Jones available to us. You know, that really strengthens our community, so thank you so much for your guidance over the years.
I want to thank you for your patience as the rookie supervisor, trying to learn your role and the supporting roles of the field advisors, and knowing your office was in transition, I was very heartened by Mr. Barnes's presentation. I think that's gonna set good footing. And as we said during that presentation, this is a world-class agricultural community. We have world-class projects that are gonna be coming up, that we are gonna be relying to UC, and of course, the University of California has global reputation for its leadership. So thank you for all the time you've spent with us, and apologies for milking that last bit of Scandinavian embarrassment over these accolades, but we're super happy that you were here.
John, just want to say, anybody who has served our communities for 30 years should be honored. The fact that you have all of those accolades attached to the work that you have done over the years, and the integral part of what agriculture plays in our communities makes it that much more important. Thank you for your dedication, your innovation, taking the initiative to do things that have not done before, hence why you were recognized for those things. And thank you for leaving the department in good hands. We need to have continuity, and we need to be able to continue the progress we've been making, so appreciate everything you've done. And does that mean you sing while you do the sheep shearing?
And there actually are some songs about sheep shearing. One of ours was a poet and wrote a poem about the physicality and friendships that are. I tell my students that, you know, agriculture is only 2%, production agriculture is only 2% of the population. The livestock industry, now you're getting into the 0.5% of the population. A sheep shear is 0.000001. They're the special forces of sheeping. And they consume in an eight-hour day the same number of calories as a marathon runner. So it's not for the faint of heart to do, and I'll be 70 this coming December, and I, it's such a fun thing to work with these groups, and to now I have, my former students are helping me instruct the course. So it's just been a wonderful thing to experience. There's been so many wonderful things, but there's more than what was written on that, on the proclamation, which I appreciate. Just was so fun, the fact that you see sheep in the vineyards, that was started here. And so it actually increased the sheep numbers.
Well, thank you for passing your knowledge and your passions forward.
I would like a picture with the board if you would.
Yes.
I just wanted to say something too. You know, thank you for the 30 years, the work you do. I know that during COVID, a lot of folks weren't able to get to sheep shears. I noticed a post by Senator McGuire of a sheep that was sheared, and he was all patched. So it's not easy. And so I, these are, these sheep also were in Hopland, right, over at the?
Some of the ones during the 2020s. Are there any other? I'm sorry. I should know that as an extension person, use the microphone. Yeah, the, when I first started the shearing school, it was actually done in Lake County. It was the first one at the Eagle Ranch, and it was Paul and Kathy Lewis's ranch at the time. And we brought in New Zealand instructors at that point, because American shearers didn't shear correctly. And the idea is you get the fleece off in one piece. So it started in Lake County, and then for a lot of years, it got moved to Booneville, and I worked with Stanley Johnson Rancher over there. And we continued, and eventually, the New Zealanders, because of work visas and stuff, couldn't come over. So then we started using some of the American shearers. In fact, one of them that I worked with for a lot of years was Mike McWilliams, who was on the USA Shearing Team. Just like the Olympics, the Golden Shearers competition in Australia is like the Olympics of sheep shearing. And they, I think now they've got it down to 20 seconds per sheep.
Wow.
Okay, so pretty impressive. But everybody in Australia and New Zealand dreams of being on those teams, and Mike McWilliams was a representative of the USA team, and he helped me teach for quite a number of years there at Stanley Johnson's. And then Stanley passed on, and so we had to move it, and we went to Hopland. And we were there for quite a long time. And then we did a brief stint because their sheep numbers went down, and I needed 350 head of sheep to guarantee that the students would have enough sheep to shear. And we didn't have that at Hopland, so moved back to a private facility. And the Irwins, Robert and Jamie Irwin, who are based over in Clear Lake Oaks here, they provide the sheep for that. We did the first two, we couldn't do it during COVID, but we did the first two over in Ukiah at the Twining Ranch. And then just this last year, we moved it out to the Pew Ranch out there in Clear Lake Oaks, which is right next to where Robert and Jamie's headquarters are. And we've got a great facility, I got a nice grant from the National Sheep Industry and Improvement Association to create shearing, portable shearing panels, so that we can actually take it out even further into different locations if we want to down the way. And my instructors can use it to continue to mentor some of our younger students, so we can keep this industry alive and keep it going. So it's been an exciting, exciting kind of situation. So I better get off the microphone. This is trouble with the extension people, you give us a microphone, we'll be here talking, taking up all your time, so I apologize for that.
We're gonna move on to item 6.5, our 9:10 a.m. item, Presentation of Proclamation Designating June 15th, 2024 to Honor Indian Child Welfare Act Day. Anyone here for this proclamation, please come up. All right, and so the board brought this forward to honor June 15th as the day, or designate June 15th as a day to honor ICWA. Indian Child Welfare Act was passed in 1978, and there's a lot of folks in our families that are here that are Native American, prior to that, were actually being fostered out. And so therefore leaving folks that never even came back to a tribe at one time or another. And I've actually spoke with somebody recently whose father was fostered out from Lake County and who is actually Pomo, and doesn't identify or isn't coming here to talk with any tribe to see which tribe he is associated with. So that's just one out of I don't know how many, not to mention boarding schools where kids never came back, or anything else that took place. So this is a very important proclamation, and I'm glad that everyone came to be here as a part of it, and so I'll move on with it. So this is a proclamation designating June 15th, 2024 to honor Indian Child Welfare Act Day. Whereas, the Indian Child Welfare Act was enacted by Congress in 1978 to address the crisis affecting American Indian and Alaska Native children, families, and tribes due to the high number of children being removed from their homes and placed in non-Indian foster or adoptive homes, often far away from their communities and culture. Whereas, ICWA recognizes the inherent sovereignty of Indian tribes to determine the best interests of their children, aiming to keep Indian children connected with their families, communities, and cultural heritage. And whereas, ICWA establishes minimum federal standards for the removal and replacement, or placement, of Indian children, and affirms the importance of tribal authority in child welfare matters, ensuring that Indian children are placed in homes that reflect the unique values and traditions of their culture. And whereas, the continued implementation and enforcement of ICWA are vital to the preservation of Indian tribes and well-being of Indian children, providing them with a sense of identity and belonging that is essential for their development and success. And whereas, the area known as Lake County has been developed upon the ancestral homelands of indigenous people who have continuously inhabited, utilized, and stewarded the land since time immemorial, and is also the home to seven federally recognized tribes, Big Valley of Pomo Indians, Elam Indian Colony, Habemetalal Pomo of Upper Lake, Coy Nation of Northern California, Middletown Rancheria of Pomo Indians of California, and the Robinson Rancheria of Pomo Indians, and the Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians. And whereas, we recognize and honor the resilience and strength of Indian tribes, families, and children, and commit to supporting the principles and practices established by ICWA. And whereas, on June 15th, 2023, in the case of Holland versus Brackeen, the United States Supreme Court decided to uphold and reaffirm the importance of the Indian Child Welfare Act by a vote of 7 to 2, where Justice Neil Gorish stated, "In adopting the Indian Child Welfare Act, Congress exercised that lawfully or lawful authority to secure the right of Indian parents to raise their families as they see pleased, the right of Indian children to grow in their culture, and the right of Indian communities to resist fading into the twilight of history." And whereas, June 15th, 2024 provides an opportunity to reaffirm our commitment to the Indian Child Welfare Act, to raise awareness about its importance, and to celebrate the progress made in protecting the rights and cultures of Indian children. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake hereby designates June 15th, 2024 as a day to honor the Indian Child Welfare Act, and encourage all citizens to learn about and support the principles of the Indian Child Welfare Act, recognizing its significance in safeguarding the future of Indian children and their communities, passed and adopted this 11th day of June 2024, signed. Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Sabatier. Chair Sabatier.
I'm gonna thank the, you know, the Board of Supervisors for, you know, proclaiming this day as Child ICWA Day. Thank you Supervisor Crandall, Supervisor Simon. You know, the importance of ICWA for tribes, you know, I've seen the effect that it has on our people, you know, when they're adopted out to families and are taken away from their culture, and the effects that it has on them. You know, we have tribal members that come back and they're just lost, you know, and to be able to keep them in the homes with, especially within their own tribal community is very, very important, you know, and we work hard to keep that, you know. And so I'm just very grateful for this day, and thank you guys again.
Again, thank you for the board for bringing this forward. It is very important when we're working in ICWA for the county agencies to work with us. There is an ICWA 30 form that should be sent out by Social Services when they have a child come in to their program. If CWS has a child that they're working with, a probation has a child they're working with, it's very important that we receive these notices so that we are in contact with these children when they're taken out of their homes. And that does not always happen, especially in this county, unfortunately. So I would like to bring that to awareness and to make sure that our county agencies are working with the tribes. Myself for Scotts Valley, we have Nancy for Big Valley, Marcia for Robinson We have Nancy for Big Valley, Marcia for Robinson, Tatiana for Upper Lake, and Ursula for Middletown. Just to make sure that all of the agencies know who we are, know our faces and have our phone numbers to make sure that our children are getting connected with their people. Our culture is very important, our teachings, and just making sure that they have additional resources when needed.
My name's Marcia Lee. And I've had the great fortune of working with Robinson Rancheria for the last 21 years. It's really been a passion of mine, a career that I came out of nonprofit moving to Lake County, first job I applied for. And during that time, 21 years ago, we had no communication, we meaning the ICWA, all the ICWA workers. There was absolutely no communication between us and child welfare. So I've sat at the table and I'm so happy to see all of the representatives here from ICWA because as they come forward, I'm backing out. It's time to make my leave. But I will never, ever forget or not hold in my heart what ICWA means and the respect that I have for the tribe and the love. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of Habemotol Pomo of Upper Lake Tribe and our vice chair that's present here today, I'm Sherri Trepp. I'm the chairwoman, going on 16 years as leading the tribe. I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for the acknowledgement. The Indian Child Welfare Act is vital to the continuity and culture of our people and our tribal communities. Brackeen unfortunately wasn't the first lawsuit that made its way up to the Supreme Court. And hopefully, there won't be another one. But it is unfortunate that the only reason there was a positive outcome is because the parties that sued were deemed not to have standing. There is, in one of the dissents, a roadmap for someone to get standing. So we're hopeful that there won't be another case because it's more than just challenging the constitutionality of the Indian Child Welfare Act itself. It calls into question the standing that tribes have as governments, as sovereign governments, and that our citizens are just a race. So it is a lot more than just the act. It challenged the constitutionality on the basis of violating the Equal Protection Clause because tribes are just a race. It also was claiming to be an anti, it violated the Anti-Commandeering Clause for states' use of their proceeds. So it is vital that all tribes stay vigilant on protecting that act and others that may call into question that tribes are sovereign governments and it is about our citizenship and political standing. But again, thank you to the Board of Supervisors for the acknowledgement. It's really heartening to see how things have changed over the course of the last 20 years. And I'm really happy that they have. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right.
I'm Inahe Kalakdak, Moke Simon, Tribal Chairman of the Middletown Rancheria. I want to thank everybody for being here today for this proclamation. I want to thank the board. I want to thank for the work that's being done in the county. But Chairwoman Trepp, you know, said it. There will be another challenge. And we always need to be ready to protect our sovereignty and our members and who we are as standing in this country. I know that some of our success over the past 30 years in business and other things, you know, people think, you know, everything's okay. But we're constantly under attack as governments and we need to continue to fight. Today, we addressed elders and children in two proclamations, our most valuable assets in Indian country. And keeping our children within our tribes and our homes is a long-term battle. It's a generational battle that we've been going on. So over my, going on 30 years for the Middletown Rancheria, we've gone through many different iterations. You know, there is one thing that is not much known outside of Indian country, but tribal customary adoption orders are very important to work with counties to make sure that we can do, as we've done for thousands of years, keep our children in our homes and work together. So today is a very powerful day. I want to thank everyone for being here. And we'll continue that fight and we'll do it together. So thank you very much.
So I'll just say lastly that in the proclamation, it talks about educating. And just want to go back to about two or three weeks ago, there was a ceremony at Bloody Island, a sunrise ceremony. And in that, there were Boy Scouts that came forward and attended it. The reason why they attended it was because the Boy Scout, the adults of the Boy Scouts were doing projects that gave them a badge that weren't really associated with Native. It was just like a doll or something they had to do. And so they asked and reached out to learn more or find something else that's more legitimate to California and natives here. They're thinking that they're learning something with Midwest natives or anything in general that's kind of folklore. There truly is folklore. It's not even the actual tribal affiliated, you know, activities. So when they came out, they learned. And that's how it happens, educating. I know that at times a lot of folks don't understand, but this is how we do it. We start helping to educate one another in all aspects. And so I appreciate the board working with me on this proclamation. And I appreciate everyone that attended and everyone else that's willing to learn about this. So.
Yeah, I just, Vice Chair Simon, I mean, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Crandall. I really appreciate you bringing this forward. I appreciate all of you coming today and that we have the ability to highlight and bring attention to these issues so that we can begin to work more collaboratively and break cycles and break silos and use all of our resources together to lift up all the communities. So thank you so much.
I want to thank everyone here. Before I joined the board, I worked for Department of Social Services, NCWS. And part of my duties involved ICWA noticing. For those who aren't familiar, the whole reason this law exists is when CWS is doing its job and investigating cases where these foster kiddos are taken from their families, ICWA commands basically a parallel process to really do aggressive outreach to make sure if there's any tribal ancestry that's been identified, we bend over backwards to track down those ancestral lines and see if there are people interested in interceding in this case and possibly stepping up in support of this foster child. It is a lot of paperwork. It is a lot of certified mail. And I'm so proud to see our local representatives, including social workers, step up when we're noticing tribes out of state. What we found is not all tribes have social worker staffs. Not all tribes have good records to check ancestry. And when they get these big old ICWA packets from out of state, it can create quite a burden on them. Some tribes just like, oh, we can't even handle this. I've literally had responses saying, we have nothing for you. And yet the history of this law and why we're doing it is, especially in California, such a shameful history of when kids were taken from families, actually bent over backwards looking for white foster parents as opposed to tribal reunification. So when we talk about being trauma-informed, ICWA and my training in social services was really my first introduction to the very extensive traumas that have been suffered here in California. So I want to assure those gathered here that while I was at Social Services, and I'm sure it continues today, we took ICWA very seriously. And I want to thank program managers, Mary Pagon, Kim Costa, poor Tyler Warren, I think is the staff service analyst that picked up these duties after I left. And Gracia Albin was my supervisor before that. All of these people really informed me about the history of this law. They gave me the proper tools to apply this law. And I just want you to have every confidence that I'm sure there's still challenges and you probably need an ICWA 10 and an ICWA 30 flying here and there that didn't get done. We know there's a process and we're going to apply that process robustly here in Lake County. And I think that's a cause for celebration.
I want to thank Vice Chair Crandall for bringing this. I know that it feels like I'm constantly gaining in education and knowledge because of the colleagues that I sit with here at this dais. And I couldn't appreciate that more. I know that there's, our focus is to build a better future, but we can't necessarily do that if we don't do something about the past. The past has placed people in different positions, some that don't have the same opportunities as others. And that's our goal is to equalize that opportunity so everybody can succeed in their lives and reach their dreams. I do want to pick on one person in this group. I got to say, Katie Ray, you are everywhere. Whether we're talking about education, homelessness, health care, anything related to social services, I just want to appreciate your advocacy. I see you everywhere. And I admire your efforts in what you're doing. And I know that you're constantly always educating me as well and trying to raise me in better knowledge and better understanding of what I need to do when I'm on this dais. So thank you so much.
Yes, I think we can accommodate.
Sam, do we need to take a five-minute break and figure out Zoom? Or are we good? Okay. We can't solve the internet. Thank you very much. We will move on to item 6.6, our 9:48 5 a.m. item. Consideration of Grant Funding $50,000 to One Team One Dream for their 2024 Annual Lake County Business Competition. Want to offer Vice Chair Crandall, if you want to make some opening comments.
Yes, I know for this proclamation, or no, I'm sorry, not proclamation. I'm sorry, for this funding, I know that in the past there's been a couple of businesses that are still thriving in regards to this event that's put on and the training that they get. And so it's really, I think it's been a really good asset in the county. So I just am glad that we can bring this here and see how we can help, you know, businesses thrive in the county.
Thank you very much. So I know that this has been going on for longer than we have been supporting this One Team One Dream competition that they hold every single year. I believe the first two years, we were not involved. And after that, we were able to change that and be a sponsor. I know that one of the reasons that we became a sponsor is it bothered me when I was, I think I was invited before we were a sponsor to listen in and watch the competition at the end where businesses were awarded their checks to help support their growth in their business. And I just, I didn't want to go by another year without being in support of this. There's definitely risk when it comes to providing support to specific businesses. We don't get to control the markets. We don't get to control the outside sources, things like disasters, COVID, things of the kind. But at the same time, our local businesses are the backbone of our communities. Without repeating exactly what was within the context of the memo, we've had 91 small businesses that have gone through the training, marketing and dynamic social media campaign. Some of that alone has helped our businesses grow just from the awareness in the public. I'm getting a... 91, sorry. I thought you were saying something about the internet. We're not going to have a conversation right now. And so 91 businesses have gotten some help already through this process. And without having to win the competition itself, they get that media awareness to the community that those businesses are here, exist and provide a service to our community. The winners thus far, there has been 27 local businesses over the past four years. Six are in the city of Clear Lake. Seven are in the city of Lakeport. And 14 have been in the unincorporated areas of Lake County. I know of one business very closely, Lam Printing. Soon after, they received their winnings, which was, I believe, the second year. They doubled their business. And in fact, today, they're working with the city manager from the city of Clear Lake because they need to expand their business even further. They've grown outside of the facility that they're in. Last year, the big winner was Terrell Martial Arts in Middletown. He won, I want to say, at least two or three awards. He won the People's Favorite Award. He won the overall big award for the expansion of business. And I forget what the third one was, but there was a third one. And I know Terrell Martial Arts very well. My son used to go to Terrell Martial Arts as well. I think that, again, with local businesses being the backbone of our community, any way that we can provide support is a return on investment. Though again, I will say there is a caveat that there is risk. Already within our budget, before even bringing this to the board, there is anticipation for $30,000 to be placed into a grant for One Team One Dream. However, the way that I see it, maybe this is not the way the rest of the board will see it. The city of Lakeport grants $10,000 with some in-kind contributions. They allow the use of their buildings and facilities for free. The city of Clear Lake grants $30,000. And it's awkward for me to stay at $30,000 to match what the city of Clear Lake is doing. Hence, in a conversation with Vice Chair Crandall, looking to see if we can go to the $50,000 level in order to really show that the county, who has the largest population, would be able to provide the largest sponsorship of this competition. I want to give some time and space also for Olga Martin Steele, who is one of the co-founders of One Team One Dream. And he, who has been involved for the last four years in this competition, to speak on any updates and information. And this is also, she was the person who wrote up what is going on with our finalists from last year in 2023, which was also an attachment to the agenda item that you see before you.
Thank you. Thank you for that introduction. I am Olga Martin Steele. I am co-founder and chair of One Team One Dream. We are a nonprofit. You did a very good summary of what we've been up to. There are actually some really amazing results coming out of this program. And I want to mention Jitter Bean. Jitter Bean is a little coffee house, you know, you drive through. She opened her second store with the funds that she received. She's looking for a third. That's how well she's doing. She's got 20 young people working. These are, you know, young people out of high school, in high school, on their way to college, learning about the business. I want to mention another, Grillgans Island. They started as a food truck. They tried it over on the North Shore. God bless them, couldn't make it on the North Shore. They moved to Lakeport. They are doing a fabulous job. They're going to be on America's most, America's best restaurants very soon. I think September is when they're going to do that. There's a lot more that comes from this program than the fact that they get money to step up their business or to start a business, whichever the case might be. The training is invaluable. I wish we could give it to everybody. They learn actually how to figure the markets out. They learn out, do they have an inch? Are they likely to succeed? And they learn to do some research that most of them didn't have clue before they came to us. I guess the other thing I want to say, because I know these budgets, I worked for government almost all my life, have had, been in the shoes where you had to make tough budget decisions. I do want to say something though about the government, nonprofit connections and how important they can be. This is a program to support... This is a program to support, to grow, to help, to boost our small businesses. Small businesses are the backbone of rural economies, I think you probably all have read that and know that, but we do it for free. We don't take, we don't hire consultants. Our board does everything we do ourselves. We take from what we learned when we worked in government or private industry. The other thing I want to say is, and I think that's an advantage, I think that is an advantage, and we are talking about economic development. You know, there are many aspects of this program that go beyond the fact that we give money to people. The fact that we could pull in corporate, other businesses, the cities, and the county in to support this program, I think speaks pretty well. Government can't do everything, we all know that, you know it better than anyone, and so, we're here to try to fill some of those gaps. So, with that, I ask your support for the increase. I want to thank you for supporting us the last two years at that $30,000 level, we very much appreciate it. We're going to, our goal, it's not a goal, we're going to do it, we are bound and determined to keep this program going, and we're going to, we're going to give $150,000 out this year to eight businesses. I also want to say that on May 31st, the application process closed, 79, 79. That's, that's, that's a big potential for this county out there. We only could pick 20, and we've picked the 20, and they're good ones, we're not announcing them until tomorrow because we're in the process of getting, getting in touch with everybody that was in the competition this year. So, a lot of potential for growth here, I think we bring a lot of value to the county, and I know of no other program that is doing what we're doing in this county. Thank you very much. And if you have questions, I'm standing ready to answer them, or try.
I think I'd like to take a five-minute break before we move on, and I apologize for that, I just want to take a quick five-minute break, and we will continue with the conversation with question and answers, and we will reconvene at 10:05 a.m.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Checking one, two. Check. Checking one, two. Whoops, sorry about that. Checking one, two. Okay.
And that's my initial thought there is just a question. I'm not going to put you on the spot for an answer. Obviously, you have a board of directors, too. But as we build on this success, I just think there's an opportunity here to clarify roles and responsibilities. And I think an MOU or a contract of sorts might be the way to do that. So that's my comment right now.
And just for clarification, we're not increasing it by 50. We're just increasing it to 50. Just wanted to, in case I misheard you, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you very much. Supervisor Piska.
Yeah, I think this is a great program. I've had a lot of friends go through, and it's really vigorous. They've learned a lot. They've been stretched and pushed into, you know, developing a new skill set. So I think it's great. I'm not okay with increasing the budget. We have $30,000 in the budget. I know we have other marketing and economic development projects coming. We'll likely hear about it next week during budget hearings. I hope we do anyway a little bit. We also have our CDBG programs that we apply every year for support for small businesses, the loans, and the technical support. And so I'm hoping that maybe One Team One Dream can help promote those services that we have through CDS and Jeff Lucas, because sometimes they're underutilized. So it'd be a great component to build into the program to make sure that we're reaching all of the business owners. But I just, I cannot, in good faith, raise this up to $50,000 when we have other services that we're obligated to be providing for our constituents.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments? Supervisor Simon?
No. You know, obviously, supported this program right from the beginning. I do like Supervisor Green's comment. If it's going to be an ongoing funding thing that's happening every year, I think we do need to explore, or the board should explore. I won't be here next year to vote on this, but should explore that MOU opportunity, continue to grow through that, through that aspect. You know, ultimately, obviously, as you said, Tyrell, Dan Tyrell, his business is doing very well down in the city. Been to Grillgens Island, too. They were, were they two years ago? Did they win, or they were second?
They applied the second time the second year, and they actually got in because they didn't the first year.
Okay.
And they won a third place, and they also won what we call the fan favorite, which is something my co-founder and I do, comes out of our pockets. And so, yeah, Grillgens Island didn't, just didn't do well on the North Shore, so they moved over into Lake.
Yeah, they're over here now.
And they're doing great, yeah.
Yeah, and obviously, supporting economic development has always been something I would, you know, continue attempting to do. So see how the rest of the board goes today, but, you know, I think for this request, you know, I'm probably going to be in favor of doing it this time, but I think the MOU conversation is really important.
I could add, if I might. Is it okay for me to? Well, we started something last year, so this is our fifth year, so this is like our, we feel like this is our pivotal year where we've learned a lot, and we're going to take a hard look at what we do in the future. We actually have started working with Jeff Lucas and Nicole Flora to try to ask a question in the application about whether or not they have taken advantage of any of the training that's been offered through them or through any other program. But the other thing we've done is, last year, we now require a report at the end of a year, and we look at whether or not they spent the money, and they actually signed an agreement the way that they said they were going to spend it. And if they don't, then we ask for it back. So that's something that we've done. I don't have a report yet because, other than what I provided just by talking to each one of them recently, but we will actually have a report, and we're still looking at doing a survey that's properly done, you know, that's done with a lot of expertise behind it to see where we might make improvements. So we're doing that constant, you know, evaluation that you should always do. So, and the other thing I want to say is that I've been asked about expenses, you know, how do, how do we pay the expenses? Most of the money that we get for major sponsorships, obviously, that goes to the awards, but we have event sponsorships, and I will say that we've got a few that have actually increased their sponsorship this year. Of so far, all that we've gone back to are continuing with the program, so.
Thank you for that. And just to at least discuss while it's not on there, I think giving consensus to have, to bring back an MOU, I think it's always good to put a relationship in writing when it's a professional relationship so that we know what roles and responsibilities we have. I know I'm doing similar changes over at PEG TV right now, trying to build an MOU between PEG and the City of Clear Lake because we have in-kind contribution, but there's no definition of what that means, and so we're getting that defined. And I think this would lead us to a better understanding of what exactly is expected and why it is that we are supporting the competition. So I would love to get a consensus to bring that back at a time sooner than later.
Yes, for me.
Okay. Any other comments before we open it up for public? All right. Let's see if anyone wishes to speak on this item. You've missed 10 votes. So sorry. I see no hands in Zoom and no one getting up in the chamber, so I'll bring it back to the board for further deliberation or action.
Well, I'll just say, I would vote on this if it was 30,000, but I can't vote on it for 50,000. And I don't know if I'm the only one that has a problem with this, but, you know, we have hired a deputy CIO to focus entirely on economic development. We have a lot going on, and I think it's really prudent to save funds for those services and programs that we're working on. So I just wanted to bring that up to the board for more comments on the budget part of this.
Thank you for that comment.
Another comment.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, and with budget coming up, I think so, and I hope the MOU idea is not seen as oppressive. If anything, I think it's kind of like succession planning. It's basically, how does the 501(c)(3) position itself for success in ensuing years? And we want to make sure that not only the contestants are supported, but that the infrastructure is there to keep this competition strong and growing. So I want to put it as kind of a challenge. We're not asking for anything more than we might from a contestant, you know? Show us a budget. Show us your growth trends. Show us where you see yourselves in three to five years. So, so since we already have consensus to maybe research an MOU, maybe it would be premature to actually act on this request. If we go to budget and we find that budget unit does have money available to bump this up, you know, let's have that discussion. I'm certainly opening that discussion at budget, but to act on it today, short of the MOU, we just ask to get drafted and short of the additional budget information, it does, does seem just a little premature. I don't want to rule it out, but I don't think we should necessarily act on it today.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Carter, you seem to be coming to the microphone. I want to make sure to give you the chance to speak.
Thank you. Stephen Carter, Assistant County Administrative Officer. We can try to get the MOU around the same time as recommended budget, but if it's your board's wish, we can talk about it during Budget Unit 1892's recommended budget presentation, which would be on Friday, the 21st. If it's the wish of the board to talk about it more instead of making a decision today, we can talk about it more.
Well, I do have a question then about the deadline, because there's going to be a few weeks where we won't have four members here to approve that funding request. So when?
So if it's approved today, it would go into budget and it could go out as of July 1. If during recommended budget, the 20th and 21st, which everybody, I believe, is going to be here.
Yeah.
If it's decided to go to, because right now it's budgeted at 30, if it's raised to 40 or 50, it's approved as of that day, and it goes July 1 live as well. So the decision would either be made on the 20th, 21st, or today, while everybody's here.
So we could approve it for 30 today?
Well, it's already in the budget.
It's already, right, so we just approve it today.
It's in recommended.
It's in recommended budget.
It hasn't been approved yet.
Right. And then if we had more conversations next week about it, it could be changed.
Yes. And you can also approve 50 and change it. 20th and 21st is the final blessing. I don't know what else to say about that.
The final blessing, guys. Thank you, Mr. Carter.
I think $30,000 is, it's still a lot of money, and I think it will really benefit a lot of the business owners. It's, you know, what we've been working on the last couple of years, and I think it's the right amount for today.
And my personal opinion is $20,000 is not a large amount, the amount of salary savings that we've had historically on carryover balance from year to year. Asking $20,000 is not something that we don't have. Our budget is not so tight that $20,000 would be a detriment to us at all. And also, I think that, yeah, I think that this has benefits, and I want to continue supporting that. And again, I'd like to stand out that the county has a larger sponsorship than the rest.
So I'll just say, you know, I don't like being put in a position where we're trying to keep up with the Joneses. Like, that's not our responsibility here. We started at 20,000, then we had a $10,000 increase, and now we're up to 50,000, and I would hope that it wouldn't go up again next year. Just because we have the money doesn't mean that this is appropriate to be spending so much on this when we have other services that we can provide to all of our constituents.
Vice Chair Randall?
I think it does, and the reason I say that is because all of the different businesses that have prospered from this program, so I think it is like a seed planter, if you will. And I do know that we have an economic development representative in administration. I think this is going to work in a more synergistic way. I, you know, I'm obviously in favor of the 50,000, but I mean, if we need to look at 40,000, I'm fine with that, too, as long as we're, you know, the highest amount, considering where the county. I do also, I hear what you're saying, though, about maybe if Clear Lake decides, okay, now let's do 40, and then we get, you know, I get that. I think also the, but the MOU that we're agreeing on isn't going to help with that as well. So I'm still in favor of the 50, willing to go to 40 if need be. So, yeah.
Well, I'll bring up something else I brought up last year, and that's the option of including discretionary funding from supervisors. Because I'm pretty sure we had this conversation last year, because I was uncomfortable going to 30 the last two years, and so that is an option. If the county stays at 30 and any supervisor wants to kick in their discretionary, like, that's, that's obviously another option, too.
Appreciate the comments. Is there any action taken on this?
It's all motion to approve granting 50,000 to One Team One Dream for their 2024 annual business competition, and also with the option to conduct an MOU from here forward.
I'll second that with the MOU added. Thank you, Vice Chair.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No.
Motion carries. And that budget, it will require four fifths vote, because that's how the budgets are required, and so I think the discussion can continue there again after the fact of this approval. This just requests that staff look to implement 50,000, and then we'll see what that looks like within the budget.
And the only reason why it came up is it's going to be a specialty because the recommended budget's already completed, so it's going to, per this motion, it will have to come up as an adjustment during the hearings.
Thank you very much. All right. We are going to move on to item 6.7. Item 6.7 had some notification issues. That item will be moved to June 25 at 10:15 a.m. And at this moment in time, we will not discuss the item itself, but I do want to open it up for any comments about the moving of the item to that future date. And if there's no comments from the board, I'll open it up for the public again to speak solely on the moving of the item. I see no hands in Zoom and no one in the chamber getting up, so I'll bring it back to the board for action to move it to that time and date.
So I'll motion to move item 6.7 to June 25 at 10:15 a.m.
I'll second.
That's good enough, Mr. Guentavano. Perfect. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. So we do have staff here for two items. So let's go ahead and start off with 5.14. Approve the plans and specifications for the Lucerne Harbor dredging project and authorize the Public Services Director to advertise for bids. Director Ewing, welcome. Good morning.
Thank you. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. So typically for approval of plans and specifications for a project, we put it on consent and it was requested to be polled. I'll give a brief summary of the project. It is dredging of Lucerne Harbor. It's been a project on the books for quite a while, and we have worked through a variety of issues and we're ready to go to bid. We have funding aligned up in Budget Unit 1781. There are mitigation measures that are required during the project, and we have a plan in place for that, both tribal monitoring, archaeological monitoring, as well as off-site disposal. So I think maybe there, I'll just pause and, you know, Chair, or Vice Chair Crandall, if you...
No, I don't have any questions. I think I just wanted to make sure that we pulled this to, you know, just have a discussion about it so that the public can see this. I know that at the Central Region Town Hall last night, it's usually a running item on their town hall agenda, so I wanted to just make sure that we had somewhat of a, you know, a discussion about it. I know it's something that commonly in any other situation would just go right through on consent, but because it's been such an item of interest on that agenda, I just wanted to make sure and give somewhat of a timeline as well. And it's to support what's happening as of now because it's been reported to the Central Region Town Hall that this was taking place this year, and it is. And so I know that there's been other discussions and folks that are stating things, and I know it's just because they don't have the right information. And when this started, it was like 2019 when we approved the funding. 2020 came. I mean, COVID's not a good excuse, but that is what it is. That's what it was. We were, you know, we weren't able to do these things that year. 21, it commenced and moved forward. However, it sparked SEQA. And so that's what we went through that year. And then 2022, we finally got to a point of running that SEQA situation, and there was actually an artifact found. And so when that takes place, it takes a while to move forward from there. So I just want to say that Lars, you've been pushing this along, you know, with the limitations that you had here and there, and it's not anything against you. It's what you've had. It's things that have taken place. So you're on time with everything that you've said, in my opinion. I've been watching, and I appreciate you working through this, giving updates to our town hall. I'm glad that we're here. And I just wanted to also add that everything that's been reported, we're here, and it's been what you've been reporting to the town as well. So I know it's taken a while. Government takes a while. I appreciate that the board supported the funding back in 19 and then continued forward. So I just wanted to highlight that because a lot of times misinformation is put out there, and so I just wanted to make sure that that is highlighted. Thanks.
Yeah, the timing on it was, you know, it's not something that I would like to put my name on, but yeah, there were obstacles along the way that weren't anticipated, but we've certainly learned from those. So the timing on it, yes, we do intend to go to bid should your board approve the plans and specs. We would go to bid not soon thereafter. And pending bid results, construction, one of the reasons for the delay, at least the most recent one, is a very specific construction window that we have for hitch. So we can only do construction between October 15th and December 31st. And so inasmuch as last year, near the end of fall last year, we received the, you know, the approval, the SEQA approval for it, the window had come and gone for us to have time to go out to bid and line up a contractor and do it during that work window. So, yes, we do anticipate going to construction. To call it construction, you know, it's deconstruction, really. We're removing, we're not building anything, but it would be this, you know, this fall and winter. So happy to answer any other questions here.
And from what I stated, it is no, it's not your name on, it's all these other situations.
No, I'll put my name on it, and I, you know, my department can learn from it, and I think others have learned from it as well, what the, you know, the best process to go through, you know, the lessons learned from, you know, having a SEQA kind of predetermined. No, I mean, we need to have the project description fleshed out and get our comments through there. So it's nothing, we've certainly learned from it, my department and others.
We all have. Me, too. Thanks, Lars.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. Excited to move this, see this project move forward. You're right, you get comments up there, oh, this will never happen. It will happen. I do want to notice, note that we're here to approve the plans and specs. They're not posted with the agenda item, so, you know, I'll be moving ahead today, but it's awkward for any agenda item when we're asked to approve something that we literally haven't seen on the agenda. So I'm glad you guys have confidence that it's there, but as a sitting board member and a member of the general public, we're here to approve plans and specs that are sight unseen. So first question, is there something proprietary or something that these plans and specs are not suitable for public inspection or posting?
When your board approves plans and specs, they are, I hesitate to say always, but in my experience with the county, it has been always available for board review at the administrative office, which was the case here. So the board memo does indicate that. It was filed with the clerk of the board. I know at least a couple of board members did review those. And the reason for not posting it to the public is it will go out to public bid soon. And so if we're providing it out there prior to your board's approval with any changes, you know, for, I guess, a fair bidding process, we want to ensure that we're posting it at a certain time and through a certain process that the state code requires.
So you're saying there's something about the bidding process that would argue against public disclosure of what we're approving here today?
Well, what I would say is that in my experience with all the public projects that we've ever put out to formal bid, this is the process that we've followed. I don't want to say that, I'll need to research that and probably in coordination with legal and others, but that's been the process that we've followed for all formal projects that we don't include with, we don't post it for public review when your board is approving the plans and specs. They will go out to, for the public to review when we post them for bid, but not for board review of the plans and specifications.
Maybe we...
We can definitely circle back.
Maybe we can follow up on that. As long as I have you here, though, that's part of a larger process. I know it's a complicated thing, but there are some dredging projects that have been proposed in my district, so I'm kind of curious to see how this thing has clunked through over the months and years, if only because I'm looking at the possible future for some dredging on the boat ramps here on the Lakeport side. So can you just give us, not like a 30-second elevator speech, but how did this process unfold? How was the noticing? How was the agency feedback? How was the SEQA? You know, what lessons learned can we apply? So when it does come time, and it will come time sooner than later, I hope, that we look at dredging projects elsewhere in the county.
So I'm going to interrupt the question. I think it's a good question. I prefer the question be responded to offline. This is specifically to the plans in front of us and whether or not to approve the plans, not to learn of the process on how the plans came to be for other projects. So I would request that that question be taken offline so we can stay focused on the specific project that is being discussed and the specific plans that we are looking to authorize to go ahead and open up the bids.
Okay.
I also want to make sure that the bid's not tarnished in any way, so I understand why we don't put the plans out for public review. If someone wants to bid on it and they have a chance to read it and all this other stuff, there's potentially some way that somebody could feel like someone had an edge. And so that's the purpose of not putting it out there and us to review in the clerk of the board's office. And so my intention wasn't to call that specific concept out. It was just to make sure we had an overview and a discussion about it. So I just wanted to highlight that.
And I appreciate you pulling this item. This has definitely been something we have been showing support for to get accomplished so that Lucerne Harbor can have the experience that everyone should have at Lucerne Harbor. Appreciate the timeline being provided between October 15th and December 31st, and appreciate the fact that the plans and specs were available. I did go through the packet yesterday, and it was easily available, and so was able to go through that. And I think that it's about, and it's about being fair and equitable to anyone that wants to provide a proposal, that everyone can have that access at the same time and not at different time periods. I think it's kind of similar to the agenda. We don't receive packages before the public receives the packages for the agenda. We receive them all simultaneously. And so I see that as being very similar. And so appreciate the conversation we had about the packet, and I am excited to move this forward, especially excited for Vice Chair Crandall because I know this has been long coming, and there's been a process, and appreciate going through the process. If there's no further, Supervisor Green?
Thank you. I appreciate your confidence in the process. My discomfort or disagreement with that process will be reflected in my vote today, but I'm very supportive of this project.
If there's no further comments, let's go ahead and...
Yeah, oh, yeah, you're open to the public?
If you want to speak.
Oh, no, 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 go ahead. Yeah.
Yeah, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? I see no hands in the Zoom room and no one getting up in the chamber. Bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I will move to approve the plans and specifications and authorize the Public Services Director to advertise for bids for the Lucerne Harbor project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think the next item, I don't know if you want to stay or...
I'll be available. It's not my item. I'll be available if there's questions.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to item 7.3. Consideration and discussion of an agreement with Black Dog Designs for Trails website for an amount not to exceed $31,559.97, and authorize the chair to sign. Mr. Rickelman, welcome. What was that? Not yet. I wanted to hit up the ones that we have staff in the room for.
Did you bring up the PowerPoint? No problem. The lights are flashing.
It's on the USB.
It's on the jump drive, so if you go to the File Explorer. It's not popping up.
There it is.
There it is. Thank you.
Perfect. Mr. Carter approached, and everything's shut down. Perfect.
Good morning, Board. Ben Rickelman, Deputy County Administrative Officer, here with the Trails website project. So I'm sure as many of you are aware, there used to be an active Trails website associated with the county connectite trails system. I think it was a great community resource, and we were recently approached of possibly relaunching it. The advantage to this project is about 75% to 80% of the content is there, and they can, we can access it through the Internet Web Archive. We have access to all the existing data. So it was a great resource for the community. I mean, just kind of dated design-wise, and that's totally understandable when it was created. So this is more of a refresh and update of the information. With using kind of the marketing direction we're going with the economic development website, our contractor for that, Black Dog Designs, has experience with Trails website and land conservation organizations. Move this, I'm not... So they've worked on several projects that would be similar to this. One of these is with a county in upstate New York, and one is with a land conservancy. Speaking about the design, so this is part of the economic development website that's in development. They've been, I would say, about 90% done with the design elements. We're just working on content creation at the moment. So that should launch in the next few months. We're just working on building up our photography library and writing out the copy. So if this project was to go forward and have a similar aesthetic to the economic development website, it wouldn't be a copy, but since Black Dog's kind of gone through the branding exercise, they've now been to the county for a series of meetings twice. So I feel confident they have a strong grasp on kind of the dynamics here. Just to give you more of a feel, this is the website in development. And so the Trails website looks somewhat similar. So as I mentioned before, a lot of the content is already there. There would be updates to kind of what's happened. We would also, a new feature would be, I think it's important, is public lands description. One thing I noticed when moving to Lake County was just the myriad organizations that have public land here. And so it can be a little confusing for visitors. And also speaking, why is this economic development project? So when the Trail website was active, Google Analytics showed it was about 25% Lake County residents that utilized it, and then 75% out of market. It was about 85% California residents. So I think it would be a strong tool for both our hospitality industry, and that would be kind of the direct industry relation, but also just as a talent recruitment and retention tool. So a lot of times recruiting to Lake County can be a challenge, and to have these upfront resources to really showcase the assets of the area, I think, would be powerful. And it's also how we're thinking of designing it. There will be periodic updates, but it's going to be designed in a way where it's going to be, I would be, say, kind of a semi-annual update besides the events section. So the contract terms with Black Dog would be $21,600 for design and then $3,319.99 per year for hosting and support. There was a question with regards to the timeframe for the hosting and support, so we made the contract language a bit different. So those full three years will be part of the launch. It was originally drafted the other way because this would utilize ARPA dollars, and because it's ARPA, federal laws, it has to be expended by 2026. So the annual payments for hosting and support would still, all will go out by 2026, but the timeframe for hosting and support would be for three years once it launches. And we're going to amend the economic development website so that's a similar structure. That's all I have at the moment. Happy to take questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Any comments, questions? Supervisor Green?
Thank you. If I understand this right, this is a relaunch, and you have a bunch of content from the prior site?
Correct.
Okay. And this is a three-year contract, so I'm sure it's anticipated the site would extend beyond that three years. But what I hear... But what I hear, have here today is just the contract. So I guess my question is, what is the sustainability after the three years? And the only real pain point I have about the design, if we were bootstrapping a brand-new site, that'd be one thing, but if we're basically relaunching a site that already had perfectly good design features in it, it just seems a lot to me. So can you speak first to the what happens after three years and this contract expires?
Yeah, it was, I think, just, we wanted to be careful and prudent with our contract lengths, so we did an initial three-year timeframe, but the idea would be to extend it. Maybe there's someone where it's a bit cheaper, but I think just kind of performance-wise and getting this executed, it made sense to have the same contractor. Regarding why we're redesigning it, so the web, the original Canachti Trail website was built around 2010. So there is some content that does need to be updated. There is some information of trails and public lands where that needs to be tweaked or built upon. And we do kind of want brand consistency between the TID, the Economic Development website, and the Trail website, so there's kind of a coherent narrative. So we're also working closely with the TID to make sure they'll speak with one another.
Do you anticipate, then, that this would get folded into future TID funding requests, the maintenance of this website? Or are we going to keep it in-house somehow? Or have we crossed that bridge yet?
At the moment, I think it would be in-house. I haven't had that conversation with the TID. So there is going to be annual hosting and support going forward, but I'm happy to have that conversation.
Thank you.
Supervisor Pyska?
Well, I mean, we fund the TID, and funding's pretty slim there, so I wouldn't think that that would be something that they could take over without county support. But it's in three years, so who knows how things are working out. But three years is a good timeline, because things get old and stale, and you need a little refresh sometimes, so I think it's an appropriate time for a contract. I'm really excited. The one thing that didn't come up is the health metrics and getting people out on trails. When you make things as easy as possible for access, then you have more of the population using them. So this is going to be a really valuable tool for the people that live here and don't know where the trails are. Or, I'll just ask you, you just recently moved here. What was your experience with trying to find something to do outside?
Yeah, I should add my personal experience here. I was kind of shocked when I moved here, the availability of public land, but how difficult it was to find trails and resources. I really had to ask around. We are planning to embed all trails in Strava. They have that option if those trails, we have them on both sites. But I think it'd be a great resource there, and especially with Clear Lake and the water trails and the access points, there isn't really any easily accessible resource at the moment. And when a lot of people, I think, kind of do that two-day vacation in Lake County, how do they find out about that if they're not familiar? And so that can drive repeat visits and good word of mouth.
Yeah. One thing I find a lot is people relocate here from another area, and they're thinking they're moving to this great place that has all these outside, our outdoor resources, and then they find that they, like, how do you access anything? Just like your experience, like, it's frustrating.
Yeah, especially with so much of the public land being BLM and even National Forest, it's not like national parkland. It's not easily sketched out, and, I mean, there's some advantage to that. It's more remote, it's less crowded, and that's appealing to a certain population. But at the same time, we want to provide access and instructions, and even like, so I've lived here a little over a year, and I do certain things outdoors, and I talk to people who have grown up here their whole life, and they aren't cognizant of these different opportunities, especially with kayak and boating, but even hiking and running.
Yeah. I mean, that's my experience. I know every trail around me, but if I try, if I leave my community, I have no idea where to go. So I think it's an important resource, and thanks for bringing it to us. I think that partnering with the CTAs, once this is launched, is going to be another valuable resource, because we have those folks out there interfacing with visitors all the time. So it would be a really great resource to kind of push out to that group as well.
Yes, we plan to partner with the CTAs and also private businesses that, not just kind of directly in hospitality, but ones that kind of interact with this sector and then just kind of interact with tourists and certain points with residents also.
Yeah. And then obviously, can't wait for the all trails in Strava, because when you've got your Strava network, people looking at where you're going, that draws people to trails. Because Strava, it didn't happen.
Vice Chair Crandall?
Yeah, so I just wanted to highlight that there is a heightening interest for these trails on the North Shore. I have some constituents reaching out to me about this, just sending me different websites from outside of the area. With the Berryessa Snow Mountain extension, there will be a lot of folks that will be attracted to this, because now there's an entryway when you come through Highway 20. So now they can take what used to be as the Walker Ridge, which is now Condor Ridge or Mulligoyic, there's access to these things. There's always interest when it comes to what you can do recreational. That was one of the biggest drives for that extension. Another aspect is RCRC's consistently had presenters that talk about the mountain bikes and the trails and all of those things. So, you know, the current website's outdated. Let's get it fixed, and we can add to it, you know, updated, and we can add to it, and hopefully we can work on, I'm working with some folks on the North Shore, so that we can have those as well, which is a deterrent of blight. We have so much dumping in the hills in Lucerne with something like this in place, you have more eyes on what's going on, and it can deter that type of activity. Not to mention that our Colusa County neighbors would like to connect Colusa County to Lake County, so folks can actually ride to different counties here and there, as they do with the Calbell Enduro with the actual, I don't even know what they're called, but they're, you know, the motorbikes or whatever. So, you know, I'm in support of this as well.
I'd just like to quickly add that there's a lot of challenges with rural economic development. You're kind of fighting a lot of forces. But one advantage we do have is our natural setting and natural beauty, so it's really important to leverage that for both people here and to drive investment and interest.
And just to add in to that, in Plumas and Latin, or Lassen County, there was a town that was highly affected by COVID, and because of the work that they did on this, they're now thriving. They have an actual track that everybody comes to once a year, and it's a real economic development boom for them, so.
Any further comments or questions? So I appreciate this. Anything that draws people into our community, anything that engages those already in our community to really see why you want to remain here and all the activities that you can engage with, I think it, those are all positive things. As far as resurrecting and doing a new website, technology moves forward really fast. I don't know that the previous website was designed for cell phone use. That's a huge factor in any kind of website these days. You have to be mobile-friendly as well as desktop-friendly. It's not just, technology's moving fast. We have to move on. What worked before is not necessarily what's anticipated from the end user today, and I think you wanted to mention something.
Yeah. So in the BlackDog contract, there is, and they have experience with this, is designing mobile versions. So it won't just be a replica of the desktop version, it'll be designed specifically to interact well on a cell phone.
And I know we went through that exercise with the revamping of the county website to ensure it wasn't looking good when we first looked at it on mobile devices, and we got it tweaked and changed to make sure that it did represent the imagery that we wanted people to see when they logged into our website through a mobile device. So I think that the design, the redesign, the cost of that is worth it, because we want people to have that positive experience. I don't know how all you guys go through the Internet, but if I have a negative experience on a website, I don't even want to shop there. I don't want to spend any time there. I don't want to engage. We need to make sure that it's what people expect of any professional website that's out there when they engage with us. I will say that we have created a whole lot of new websites in the recent past. That is one of my worries. I'm not going to say no today, but maybe in the future, ensuring that we are, that there's, there's an easy place on our main website to be able to reach out to all of those sub-websites, so we can connect people to those Trail websites, economic development websites, and so on, our newsletter website, and so on and so forth. Having so many different websites, when we really want to highlight one means we're not highlighting enough of one. And so that's just my thought process. Maybe it's not the correct thought process. But again, I'm going to move forward today and say yes, but I do, I am a little concerned at how many new websites we have, and I want to make sure they're interconnected and bringing people to our main landing page, which right now should be lakecountyc.gov.
Yeah, I totally get that concern, so there's going to be a lot of thought put into how these connect and advertise to one another. So there's, if someone's kind of unfamiliar with this universe of websites, they will have easy navigation. And I think also, you know, having that design familiarity with the other project BlackDog's working on, that should also help. But also working closely with the county IT department to show how we can highlight this, and so there's a lot of kind of cross-direction going on.
Yeah. And as far as the continuity of it, after the three years, websites come with a slew of data of visitors, where they're from, what they interacted with. That'll give you all the evidence you need to know, do we keep doing this? And if we do, the cost is minimal to ensure that we keep this going and that it's live and stays updated. So I'm not concerned about past the three years. I think the data will show exactly what we need to do, and we will be able to find those funds to be able to continue the activities that are on that site. So thank you very much for bringing this to us. Supervisor Green?
Just very quickly to your point, so you mentioned brand consistency, so the appearance may end up looking a lot like TID, yet this is not going to be a TID-driven website necessarily. And these microsites that are popping up are very useful, and so we do have to redesign them for responsiveness, ADA compliance, and other things. But as of right now, if you're on lakecountyc.gov and you want to link out to this thing, you're going to get the little pop-up saying you're going to an external website. So whatever branding we're doing, it kind of gets nuked every time we navigate people away from our core website and go into these niche websites. So nothing we can really do about that, given some security functionality, but it's a long-term question. If we're going to be consistent in our branding, including the use of microsites, how do we guarantee we stay under the umbrella? You know, what's government? What's a TID? You know, what's a nonprofit organization? So it's part of, it's partly a technical challenge. But I just wanted to riff off what you were saying, that this, to me, is obviously a valuable project, and we're going to do it. But as far as harking back and branding lakecountyc.gov, this isn't really going to do it, because we're going to be linking out to a quote-unquote "external" website, so.
Thank you for the comment. If there's no further comments, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Please come on up. And I do have also another public comment from another staff member that I'd like to read after.
All right. Lars, you're the Public Services Director. I just wanted to say thank you to Admin for bringing this forward. The Canachti Regional Trails site, you know, developed goodness a decade-plus ago with, you know, with county and a lot of volunteer input, and I want to thank those volunteers, specifically Holly Harris and Chuck Lambether here. They put a lot of effort into this and have continued to. The exist or current, well, now non-current website, yeah, on, you know, godaddy.com, right? And that's, you know, probably not the most appropriate use of it, and that kind of led to why it was defunct. We, the people that were signed up there, all three were no longer with the county. And the Canachti Regional Trails program itself has been kind of handed from department to department to department, and it's good that we're having a couple of departments now, you know, working with it, and I look forward to that. I do support this from, or at least I wanted to emphasize, not me personally, but the Parks, Recs, and Trails Master Plan, that your board received a preliminary, well, a preliminary final presentation on. Updated information was a big recommendation in that master plan, providing that information to the public. It, you know, it is not a surprise that the absence of information is here. And a lot of it is that a lot, the properties are not on county land. They're not just county parks, they're not trails on county parks. They're trails that are envisioned in this plan that cross over private land, public land, and public land that has all sorts of colors on it. So it is, it is a recommendation in the master plan to update not just websites, apps. We talked about Strava, we talked about AllTrails. I want to also add another one to your, to the back of your mind, and that is Outer Spatial. Outer Spatial, as a standalone app, is now the State Parks official app. So you go, it's more about locations than it is trails, per se. So it's, what can I do in this, in this park? What can I do in this area? So it's just another, another method. You know, websites, I think, are going away, and apps are becoming the way that people get the information, so we need to emphasize that. Last piece that I'll, that I'll just say thank you and really emphasize the Parks, Recs, and Trails recommendation, the master plan recommendation, is marketing outreach and economic development coordination and collaboration. And so with Ben on board now with Admin, it provides another layer of ability to market parks, to market recreation, to market trails. So I think it's just, it's a great opportunity to do that, and this is, you know, probably the starting point for that. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Yellen.
I just want to add something, Lars. Thanks for bringing up apps. I was considering it too, because we have so many areas in the county, we don't have connectivity. And so that's why you need an app. But that's not today's discussion, that is another time. But it is important to be able to know where you are when you're out of range.
So we might be able to do something where you can download guides?
Oh, good, I was going to ask about that.
Yeah, so you could download a static document from the website and have it on your phone and bring it up.
Perfect.
That's probably the path forward with this contract. And app development is probably above and beyond this contract, but it might be something in the future.
Yeah. Thanks, I was going to ask about the downloading capability too. Perfect.
And I appreciate the conversation touching on apps. I may be speaking out of turn, I'm not getting any younger, but our youth are absolutely utilizing apps a whole lot more than they ever use websites. And so making sure that we're making that accessible to all generations to get out there on our trails, we want to make sure to get that access.
Yeah, I mean, at least from personal experience, it's almost kind of like a funnel. So you start on the website, if you're unfamiliar with the area, you kind of do some scouting, some areas you'd be interested on, and then you go to the app for the specific, so you have the trail, you can do the tracking. So having that link with the embeds with AllTrail and Strava, I think that should work well.
Yeah.
And then you can compete with people, get king of the mountain.
We're getting competitive here. I believe we have another public comment?
Hi, Elaine Brown. It's a beautiful website. I liked it, and I know with branding, one of the words that, which means a lot to me, it said cleanest air, and branding, that's so important. So I just would address the board and just ask if you could possibly protect the air of this area, because I know as an educator, parents will move to this area just because of the clean air for their children that has, have asthma or breathing difficulties. And I know I come often over the hill from Santa Rosa area, and there'll be a haze here that I don't know where it's coming from, but I know last year, addressed this board with, in going up to Lake Pillsbury, and there was mounds of logs that were wrapped with visqueen being burned. And if there's some way you can work with the other counties to protect that branding of the cleanest air, because that's something in California that a lot of people cherish, including myself, so thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And I do not see any hands in Zoom. I'm going to read a letter here. This is from Angela DePaul Madal, who was not able to be here. She is in support of the agreement with BlackDog Designs to maintain a Trails website for Lake County, including the water trails. Currently, the canachitrales.com website was allowed to expire along with all the online resources for the wonderful set of water trails that are publicly accessible by quiet water users throughout Clear Lake and other Lake County water bodies. I have supported with Brian Fisher and Holly Harris over the last couple of years to get some of the water trails back online at the lakecounty.com website as blog posts. Clear Lake is recognized as the jewel of Lake County. However, someone coming to visit the lake with a desire to kayak or canoe... coming to visit the lake with a desire to kayak or canoe has very little to no online resources available to plan a trip or schedule a stay. This makes it difficult for Lake County to utilize Clear Lake as a visitor's destination and to have something tangible, like a link, to be able to share with those visitors and to distribute to market our county. In addition to tourism, a beautiful, well-maintained Trails website can be used as a solid recruiting tool. If we want to attract dedicated members of the county and city workforces to move and settle here with their families, we need to highlight the strengths and unique features this county has to offer in an easy format that can be easily found and credible. One of the most significant features of this county is local and easy access to outdoor space and recreation. But right now, that is not clear with the current online presence. Someone would have to visit many different websites, click around a lot with unconfirmed public-provided info to get a confusing and outdated picture of the outdoor landscapes and recreational wonderlands that are available right here in Lake County. A strong online presence is needed. Much like an effective marketing tool, it has to be built in O and M if we want the beauty of Lake County to shine past our county borders. And thank you for those comments. I'll close public comments. Let me make sure no hands came up, and bring it back to the board for action.
I move that we approve the Black Dog Designs for, contract for an amount not to exceed $31,559, $31,559.97 and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coret Coleman. Let's go ahead and move on to our behavioral health items, since they've been waiting patiently for us. Consideration of Amendment Number Two to the Agreement between the County of Lake and Vista Pacifica Enterprises, Inc. for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services in the amount of $400,000 for fiscal year 2324. Director Jones, welcome.
Thank you so much. Yes, bringing this contract before your board, just to let you know, it is a placement for people on conservatorship. So, our most, our highest acute, also people who may have co-occurring medical needs that need nursing services are served in this facility. We are very much looking, as I've stated before, at bringing our conserved people back in county and are exploring actively, like, how we can do that. So, hopefully, in a couple of years, we won't have such high bills regarding housing of our conserved people. But for the time being, they need this kind of care. So.
Thank you very much for your summary. Any questions or comments? Okay, let's open it up for public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? See none in the chamber, no hands in the Zoom room. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Very quickly, I saw 400 on the title. Am I looking at the wrong amendment?
Amendment.
Okay, I'm sorry. I misread it.
Amendment two increases it by 100.
My bad. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Amendment Number Two to the Agreement between the County of Lake and Vista Pacifica Enterprises, Inc. for Adult Residential Sports Services and Specialty Mental Health Services in the amount of $400,000 per fiscal year 2324.
Second.
Hold on one second. Mr. Guintavano?
And your board may also want to add in that motion and authorize the chair to sign.
And authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you for ensuring that that was correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 7.6. Consideration of Amendment Number One to the Agreement between the County of Lake and Santa Rosa Behavioral Healthcare Hospital for Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospital Services and Professional Services Associated with Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospitalization in the amount of $200,000 for fiscal year 2324. Director Jones.
Thank you, Board. As you may have awareness, our hospitalizations have been increasing because of mobile crisis, I would say, is driving an increase in hospitalizations, which was an unintended outcome. But what it told me was that a lot of our population was underserved and was just not receiving support and services during a crisis. And so, now that we've had better penetration into the community and we're getting out there, I think it should stabilize within the next several months, and we should see a true number of our hospitalization demand. And then, we can continue to pivot and look at how we can prevent hospitalizations, which is the ultimate goal. But for now, Santa Rosa Behavioral Health is a valued partner. It's nice that they're right in our contiguous county. People don't have to go far, and they seem to provide excellent care.
Thank you for your summary. Just real quick, for the public, we did go from $50,000 to $200,000. That's the increase that you speak of. And that increase was within your budget request
It's budgeted.
to cover for the 2324 expenses.
That is correct.
And I appreciate you doing so that early in advance. And just want to make a public comment. Absolutely appreciate you. Thank you for your help today. I think it kind of shows a little bit, maybe not specifically to this item, but the need that there is within our community and the services that you offer to those that are in need. And I think that you're right, that it's a matter of accessing it, that the Mobile Crisis Unit makes it that much more accessible. So, appreciate that. Any questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Green?
Yes, very quickly, I think I know the answer to this question, but all these services are fully reimbursable?
Not 100%. Usually, it depends on a variety of factors, including the beneficiary's aid code. This is a hospital that does take minors, youth, which is great, very hard to find. And their rates are covered at 100% under the Early and Periodic Screening, Detection, and Treatment Benefit. However, people over the age of 21 Medicaid, Medicaid, like, there's a lot of factors. So, no, is the simple answer.
Depends.
It depends, yeah. They expect us to, to have the share of cost out of our realignment. That's been the longstanding expectation of the state.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. See no one moving from the chamber and no hands up in the Zoom room. Looking for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve Amendment Number One to the Agreement between County of Lake and Santa Rosa Behavioral Healthcare Hospital for Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospital Services and Professional Services Associated with Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospitalization in the amount of $200,000 for fiscal year 23 and 24, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. Last item before calendars. Consideration of Agreement for Professional Services between the County of Lake and Lake County PEG TV for 2425, 2526, 2627, for a maximum not to exceed $10,000 per fiscal year. I put this on the agenda and had spoken to this briefly during the annual PEG presentation of what we are accomplishing. Looking to do a three-year contract in order for just simplifying the process, so we don't have to rush and try to get things to the board in a timely way. This has been approved by the PEG Board. We are intending to continue doing the services as was anticipated before, but enhancing those services. In fact, we just received our mobile Starlink unit that we hope can be a backup unit or a primary unit for internet access to help with those issues. But I think at this point, I'd be repeating what we talked about during the annual presentation, and so open for comments or questions.
We do have Item 7.4, too.
Oh, yes. That one was skipped as well. Thank you. That one's important. And seeing no comments or questions, let's open it up for the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no hands in Zoom and no one stirring in the chamber. Bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I motion to approve agreement for professional services between the County of Lake and Lake County PEG TV for 24, 2024 through 2027, for a maximum, maximum not to exceed $10,000 per fiscal year.
Your board may want to add in that motion, authorize the board chair to sign.
And authorize the board chair to sign.
Thank you, Mr. Guintavano. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item 7.4. Consideration of an update to the 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting calendar, adjourning the currently scheduled July 2nd, 2024 meeting. CAO Parker?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I would like this, I brought this item forward for your board's consideration, given the fact that the 4th of July is Thursday of that week, that the board might consider adjourning July 2nd. That's all I have. I don't know. We do have, the chair is out of the, is not available, but I don't know who else is not available.
So, I did bring this to CAO Parker to discuss. Selfishly, I am not here, but at the same time, I know that typically, or at least historically, my experience has been that we get a day off right around that time, which a day off allows staff to decide better how to handle those vacation days, whether they take off on Tuesday or whether they take off after the fact. And I think giving them that flexibility after checking our agenda and seeing that it was already very light and not likely to become a robust agenda item, that we take a look at seeing at canceling our July 2nd meeting.
Yes, I did confirm there are no four-fifths vote scheduled for that day or hearings.
Any comments or questions for board members? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, it's not on the agenda item. I'm looking at Juneteenth now, and we have budget on Tuesday meeting on both sides of that. So, I support vacating this one, but I was just wondering if any discussion was had on the June meeting.
Yeah, Juneteenth is after a board meeting and before our budget meetings. I, I think we could have done better in planning that, but I think at this moment in time, it's too late to make any changes to that. But I think next year, we need to be cognizant of how that impacts staff, especially if they're still preparing for our budgets for those two days coming on. So. But thank you for noticing that.
I had the same comment on the Juneteenth meeting, obviously in favor of the July 2nd, you know, not having that meeting or adjourning that meeting. But I had the, you know, the same thoughts on the, the Juneteenth. Here we have the budget meetings that we, Thursday and Friday. And, you know, also, I know it's a new holiday that we added in three years ago. I think it was approved federally, or was it?
Two or three.
And then we brought it into the county and, you know, usually paying its, paying its respect, as far as I'm concerned, to the holiday. It's a very important one, you know. So, anyway, and I, you know, so I had the same thoughts as you. So.
Yeah, we did talk about it when we set the calendar in January. We talked about if we should do budgeting the week before, but it was really tight. So.
I know we talked about the budgeting, but not specifically about
The meeting, yeah.
The holiday meeting. So,
Yeah.
I was under the assumption we were going to be canceling that, as we had always done in the eight years that I've been here. We usually cancel it. Now, I know this one wasn't eight years, but I know we respected it in the last two. So, just, just a comment.
So, just for clarification, the 19th is still a day off. The 18th is when we have our meeting. Just wanted to clarify and make sure of that. If there's no further comments, I'll open it up for public. I see no hands in Zoom. No one's stepping up to the microphone in the chamber, and bringing it back to the board for action.
Move to approve the update to the 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting calendar, adjourning the currently scheduled July 2nd, 2024 meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Our last item, other than closed session, is our weekly calendar travel and reports. We'd like to start. Supervisor Green?
Sure, because I'm always ready. Thursday, Behavioral Health Advisory Board. Also in the morning, there'll be an initial meeting of the Clear Lake State Park Master Plan Update. Master Plan Updates are a thing this year. So, if you're in District Four, District Five, basically anybody who enjoys Clear Lake State Park, they are going through their own stakeholder meeting as part of their general plan update. There is a Zoom. This is a virtual meeting, so you don't have to go to the park to participate, starting at 10:00. They have advertised it, but if you need information on that link, I can certainly share it. Just want to spend a couple of minutes. Went to Lake Fest on Saturday at the Lake County Fairgrounds. It was the inaugural event. It was all hands on deck, and it was a, to me, it was a very exciting opportunity to, to see at long last. A lot of our fledgling cannabis industry come together. We, the dispensaries were well represented, the cultivators were well represented. LCCA and the Fair Board really put on a stellar program of speaker panels. And although it was not super well-attended, it was the first one. And every now and then you get questions from people who either aren't cannabis growers or cannabis users, and they wonder about all the stuff the county has gone through over the past six, seven years in developing regulations and passing taxes. And one question I remember very distinctly from a, a meeting a few months back was, was it all worth it? And I look at that day and with a lot of pride for those people who are involved. Definitely cannabis is not everyone's cup of tea, but we're not throwing people in federal prison for mandatory minimum sentences anymore. We have, because we're a regulating county, supported not just an exciting new business opportunity for many of our residents, but we've also been able to slice off a little bit of tax revenue, which has supported this county. So, for me, it was a teachable moment, a celebration of sorts. Was it all worth it? I think the jury is still out, but when I was growing up and I was buying weed from some guy with a triple-beam scale and a shotgun in the corner, it's a much different world today. And I have the receipts. I'm glad to support our regulated industry here in Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Supervisor Simon?
Finish up the board meeting today. We have a couple of meetings tomorrow, but I'm going to actually be missing. I just let LTA know I won't be attending the LTA meeting. I don't know what you have going on tomorrow. Supervisor Green, I think you're an alternate for the LTA APC in Clear Lake. I've got to attend a hearing in Sacramento for something for my tribe. So, I've been asked to go over there. I'm going to be attending that.
An in-person?
It is an in-person meeting. It is in the
9:00 AM.
Yeah, 9:00 AM at the City of Clear Lake. I know there's a few items on there that, you know, obviously are pertinent to my district, but just can't make it tomorrow. So, also have a benefits committee that is on Zoom. I, you know, plan on do my best to attend that meeting. And then, Thursday, have the South Deal Committee meeting. I'll be attending that. That's via WebEx, and then Math on Thursday night. Saturday is, oh, the 14th, have Workforce Alliance in North Bay, which will be up here. I'll attend that in the Conference Room B, I think it is. Also have, this weekend is Middletown Days, our Middletown Days, 15th and 16th, and Father's Day on Sunday. So, obviously, got those good events that are going to be happening, be cooking some tri-tip and enjoying the parade. Hopefully, it won't be too hot. So, enjoy that in South County. And then, on Monday, we have the Risk Reduction Authority, which will be at the Cobb Mountain Water. Oh, what the heck is?
The Water Office.
Cobb Mountain Water Office, yeah. So, we'll be attending that. So, be back here on Tuesday, the 18th.
Thank you for that. Supervisor Paeska?
Tomorrow, I have a constituent meeting. I just, looks like I had a cancellation of another meeting. And then, I've got BeVAC in the evening. Thursday, I've got four things happening at once, but I am going to be out in the Riviera's because there is a big media event for the home hardening program with all of my friends from OES and Cal Fire from Sacramento are coming up. It's going to be a big deal. I'm not sure if I'm going to make the OPR quarterly check-in in the afternoon. And then, Friday, I've got a lot of overlapping, too. I'll be able to do the first half of the Workforce Alliance meeting. And then, I have the Tree Mortality meeting, and then discussions with staff. And then, I'm going out to Big Valley with Supervisor Crandall. And then, we have the CRC Grant Debrief meeting, which maybe I'll be able to make. I will definitely be at Middletown Days. I'll definitely be at Bacon Fest on Father's Day. And then, Monday, I have my definitely be at Bacon Fest on Father's Day. And then Monday, I have my meeting with CAO Parker. I have a budget meeting scheduled in the afternoon, and then the RRA and Cobb. And then back on Tuesday.
Thank you. Vice Chair Crandall?
So I'll start out with last week, some things I was working, or actually, one of the main things I was working on. I met with President of RCRC, Pat Blacklock, at Romi's, of all places. He was coming from Humboldt, and so he's like, hey, we need your help with the budget, SB one fifty-six. And so, you know, we kept having issues, as we always do when it comes to phone tag and, you know, driving through specific areas. So I asked him to meet me there. And so when we touched base, we talked about how the budget that was initially, it structured to seven hundred and fifty million dollars as an allocation, but because of the situation right now with the budget, they were looking to at least advocate for four hundred and fifty million. Apparently, when the budget came out for loan loss reserve in this situation, it wasn't listed. And so all of the policy advocates for RCRC were nervous, and they asked us to reach out, myself and a couple other supervisors, to Cecilia Aguarre Curry, who is actually one of the folks that sponsored, you know, the Assemblyman who sponsored this. And so reached out. She touched base with me on Sunday, let me know she'd be working to do this. I talked with also Senator McGuire's staff, who passed that forward, and also Assemblyman James Ramos. And so we've all been working to see who we can get to advocate for at least fifty million. One hundred and fifty million dollars was initially stated, but now with the budget as it is, I mean, the group is just willing to at least go with the pilot program of fifty million dollars. And the reason that is, is Golden State Connect Authority has been working on a project with this funding. And so if they can at least maintain that, they can get one of the pilot projects moving forward. And then with the other funding coming in in the future, that's, that's, you know, federally funded and whatnot, it could possibly help with moving these projects forward. The Golden State Connect Authority with RCRC was put together two years ago, and so it's moved fairly quickly, and it's been, it's so far successful, but I think this was a situation that might have put us back. But with this funding allocation of fifty million, at least they can move forward with that. So we've been working with our local officials on that. This week, I have, I'm going to a North Shore Fire meeting in the district. Thursday, there is a Shigum Day hosted by Robinson Ranch area EPA, which Water Resources and other agencies go, and they talk about every little aspect, every aspect that has to do with the lake, with tulie boats, you know, plants, things of that nature. And so it's a, it's a family day, too. So people actually go on tulie boats, and they learn about different animals, things like that. So there's all sorts of boots, booths, I'm sorry, that they have at this event. And it's on the shoreline of Robinson's property, so if you take old Lucerne, or old, I think it's Nice Lucerne cutoff, there is, you take a right, and it's right there on the native, the Robinson Ranch area shoreline. And so that's where that will be. Also, we'll have to, you know, jump out of there and go to the South Deal meeting, of course, and then do the EPA Ad Hoc Committee for Farm Ranch and Rural Communities at twelve. And then I think that day is, that's when we do the IWPC presentation in Ukiah. So for, that's for the Potter Valley Project, of course, and the situation with the funding that we received from DWR. Friday, I'll be prepping for Clash Against Trash, which is the second year. I called it Clash Against Trash Part Deux. It's Saturday, nine fifteen, or I'm sorry, yeah, Saturday, June fifteenth, from nine to one. It's at the Lucerne Castle. And just to highlight, there's no hazardous materials that will be accepted. What will be accepted is bulky items, couches, mattresses, et cetera, e-waste, household garbage. Partners included are Lake County Waste Solutions. They helped us with this last year. Of course, County of Lake. And then the Central Region Town Hall will be also working at that as well. And so if there's anyone that wants to come out and, you know, be a part of it and also volunteer, I know that I'll have a trailer so I can go and help folks in the community that can't take their garbage, especially senior citizens and whatnot. So there's a couple of other folks that committed last night at the Central Region Town Hall. Pretty excited about it, and hopefully, we can beat the eighteen thousand pounds of trash that was collected last year. And so, let's see, Monday, CAO meeting, and then we have a governing AAA meeting on Monday?
I can't make it.
Well, I'll be there. I see it on my calendar, but I know it's been moving here and there, but I'll just make sure I keep it there and be ready.
That's in person, too. You have to go to Ukiah.
Okay.
I told them that I was with the whole, with budgets, there was no way.
I'll just, I'll handle it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Quick question, Vice Chair Crandall. Is there any eligibility criteria for the trash drop-off? I know Lakeport Disposal does one here in Lakeport, but they do, they do want to see a city utility bill with that.
They didn't last year, and I don't anticipate that this year. I know that there hasn't been any indication that there is. Commonly, it's mainly Lucerne residents that have. There, when I was allowing people to go through, I was basically guiding them. I didn't really see too many folks that weren't from Lucerne. So, yeah, maybe that might be something we have to implement from here forward, but we'll see how it goes.
Well, I'll spare you my trash run, so.
Thank you for that. Obviously, you were raised around the eighties with your Part Deux. Love it, love it. Just a quick update. The COC is running full bore. Appreciate the board here approving the MOU. Very similar concept as what was discussed earlier. What are the roles and responsibilities of Behavioral Health, being the lead agency for the COC, that has helped us really move forward with a better understanding on our responsibilities. We now have monthly budget being provided to us and better understanding of what is remaining and what can be spent. Where before, that was not the case. And I just think that we are, we're getting to a point where we're becoming a well-oiled machine and looking to make greater impact as we get our feet planted on the ground. So that's greatly appreciated. This week, I will be in Clear Lake for the LTA APC. If I come out early enough from that meeting, depending on how long it lasts, I do have a COC Housing Navigation Subcommittee meeting at that time. We are looking to, we, meaning both cities, myself, Public Health, a meeting maybe with our county council to discuss some of the changes made to an ordinance that will be coming to the board possibly next week. At least, that's what it's slated for at this moment in time. And I have a PIT Committee meeting for the COC, rather than restarting it towards the time of, prior to January, to prepare for the PIT. This is an annual committee that continues to work towards a better count and a better activity when we do our PIT count. I do have, the Law Library will be meeting this Thursday, and also I may be in Clear Lake Oaks as the Photo Voice focus from the CHIP CHNA Group out of Hope Rising. We'll be meeting at Big Oak to showcase the Photo Voice. There is a YCCD meeting for Yuba Community College District happening at 5:00 PM that evening, but I also will be in Ukiah to present with my colleague, Vice Chair Crandall, regarding the Potter Valley Project, where we were invited to kind of repeat our presentation that we did in front of the Russian River Forum, and this time, we'll be able to provide a little bit more information regarding the grant that we just received approval from the Department of Water Resources. So excited to see what kind of discussion comes out of that. On Friday, I do have a discussion with staff. I'll be joining my colleague Supervisor Pisca. And later on that evening, Food Policy Council will be meeting. While I'm happy that on Saturday, I will be hanging out with my family. Unfortunately, I will not be able to go to Bob Malley's memorial. We did a moment of silence for Bob Malley. He represented the Planning Commission for District Two for many years, and that will be happening at 2:00 PM at the Senior Center on Saturday, the fifteenth. We'll be back on the seventeenth. It's possible that I'll have a meeting with Hope Rising on the seventeenth, meeting with CAO, and obviously, throughout that time, I believe tomorrow might be the day that the budget comes out. I know it was told it was very close, but by the end of the week, we should have access to the budget, and I'll be diving in deep so that we can all be, I can be prepared by the twentieth and the twenty-first, but then meeting on Tuesday. And that is all that I have, and we have closed session. Closed session eight point one, public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, interviews for Water Resources Director, appointment of Water Resources Director. Eight point two, public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, appointment of interim animal control director. Eight point three, public employee evaluation, county administrative officer. Eight point four, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, FERC project number seventy-seven, Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project. And with that, we will be going into closed session, and I believe we will finalize our closed session prior to going to lunch. I guess that depends the timeline of what we spend on these items. But we will be coming back also to, most likely into live session. So thank you for joining us. For now, we're going into closed session.